Hearing that, and welcome, everybody. Consideration of approval of the agenda.
So I move, Your Honor.
Second.
Clerk to call or roll?
Star.
Aye.
Jaeger. Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
The agenda is approved as submitted. Consideration of approval of the minutes of the September 8th and September 16th meetings. Any discussion or questions?
So I move, Your Honor.
Second.
Clerk to call the roll.
Jaeger. Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Star.
Aye.
The minutes of the September 8th and September 16th meetings are approved. Consideration of approval of the consent calendar. Any questions regarding the consent calendar?
So I move.
Second.
Clerk to call the roll.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Star.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye. Consent calendar is approved as submitted. Business of the mayor. I have something I came across recently that I wanted to put in with the proclamations because the week that we're talking about, September 28th through October 2, 2015, has to do with National Manufacturing Week. And I think the reason why I want to make sure we at least note that is in some of the advertising for the particular activities, people like Cambrex, Metis, and let's see, one more, Winnebago are part of that advertisement. And I think Charles City is quite well-known for having a strong manufacturing base, and it's our way forward into the future in terms of continuing to build on that base. So I'll read the proclamation that has been submitted. The proclamation supporting National Manufacturing Week, September 28th through October 2, 2015. Whereas manufacturing makes a significant contribution to the national, state, and local economy, and whereas manufacturing provides good employment opportunities and careers for skilled workers, and whereas our community is fortunate to be the home of many great manufacturing companies, and whereas our community's manufacturing companies are vitally important to the prosperity of Charles City. Now therefore, the city of Charles City does hereby proclaim September 28th through October 2, 2015, as National Manufacturing Week, and we urge all citizens to join in recognizing the value of manufacturers and the importance they serve in our community. Signed by myself after this is approved. So I would submit that for approval.
So I move.
Second.
Clerk to call the roll.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Star.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
The proclamation is approved and will submit it for the file. Next up is a request for use of Central Park on October 3 by Community Revitalization for Tailgate Party. Discussion.
Well, Mark Wicks from Community Revitalization has asked to utilize Central Park on October 3 for a tailgating event, which will run from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. and running coordination with the Witch Fest this year, and is designed to help diversify the events going on to get a larger crowd, and they're going to have a big screen TV down there. They play in the Iowa-Wisconsin game, and so they're making a request to utilize the park for that purpose.
Do you have anything further to add? Representative of Community Revitalization?
This is an event by Community Revitalization that is being done in partnership.
Your name, please?
I'm sorry, Mark Wicks from Community Development. Community Revitalization is doing this event in conjunction with the Chambers Witch Fest retail promotion. We want to have an outdoor, another reason to get people downtown, like you said, it's going to be for a diverse audience. We'll be offering the Iowa-Wisconsin game on the band shell and a 65-inch television. We'll have Hy-Vee grilling, burgers and brats, and they'll also have a nacho bar. The Pub Crawlers will have a small beer garden. We'll be selling popcorn pop and water as well, and having a beanbag tournament with cash prizes for the winners. So we're looking forward to a fun event. First time we've tried this one, and it's all come together really well. And the event will go approximately 11:00 a.m. to about 4:00 p.m. The game they just announced is at 11:00, but it depends on how long the beanbag tournament goes and how many participants we have are looking for a good turnout with that.
It sounds good. The press is temporarily left, but that means the chamber's out on a witch hunt?
That's right.
All right.
No cauldrons or dunking stools or steaks or anything like that?
You can do whatever you want after 4 o'clock, and it's not our event, so beyond that.
Just asking. And not on city property.
We've had great cooperation from everybody, and this event's come together pretty quickly as a first-time event. We're all excited. We got good sponsorship. We've had real good reaction to it, and Park and Rec is going to leave the tables and the picnic for another week or so for us. We'll be able to utilize those. And again, the city's provided the band shell, so we appreciate that.
What time does it start?
11:00. Same time as the game.
Sounds like a good event, Mike.
Yeah, sounds great.
Should be fun.
Thank you.
Discussion or motion?
So I move.
Second.
Clerk to call the roll.
Malero.
Aye.
Star.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Okay, the request for use of Central Park is granted. Consideration of Resolution Number 115-15, adopting the Floyd County Multi-Jurisdictional Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan. Discussion.
Well, at one of our previous workshops, Matt O'Brien attended from NIACAG and reviewed the Floyd County Multi-Jurisdictional Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Say that real fast.
Say that again.
That's really amable.
So in preparing for this plan, city staff and NIACAG, we worked together to address our top hazard concerns, which some of the foremost ones included flooding, tornadoes, traffic accidents, hazmat issues, and the like. So having this plan adopted and in place will allow participating entities such as the city, or even the school for that matter, to plan to receive federal and state funding if a declared disaster. I know these are usually precursor to safe rooms, too, if you want to build a safe room and get federal funding, so it could become very handy if some of the construction happened.
Does this plan include not just the event itself, but the mitigation aspects of things so that we can tie this to some of the things we're working on involving flood control, that kind of thing?
It'll have some mitigating measures in it. One of the things, it doesn't really address those specifically, is like having like an emergency plan list of like, you know, owners. If you have a list of who has excavators and backhoes and things of that nature, that's something kind of above and beyond what that would get into, which we would have on a local level, which we probably have to a certain extent. But as far as mitigation measures, that would be covered within that plan.
Other questions or discussion?
I so move.
Second.
Clerk to call the roll.
Star.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Resolution 115-15 is approved. Consideration of Resolution 116-15, approving the state finance report for fiscal year Discussion.
This is a report that's required by the DOT every year. It's basically just a summary of all of our street-related expenses, both in the road use tax fund and our general fund. We have to list out all of our equipment we have that we use on the streets, debt that we have that pertains to streets, projects that we've completed through the year. So it's something that we need to turn in, otherwise they start withholding our road use tax payments, and that's not a good thing. So it's due September 30th every year. So I've included the report, the summary sheet. I didn't get any of the detail to you, but it's basically just a summary of all of our street-related expenses and revenue.
Unless we have a really big project, this thing seems to run about the same amount of
Generally.
...general numbers every year.
Generally, yeah.
From what I recall of the prior year's reports, so.
Further questions or discussion?
It's so I move. Second.
Clerk to call the roll.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Star.
Aye.
Resolution 116-15 is approved. Consideration of Resolution 117-15, approving facade funding for Charles Theater 409 North Main. Discussion.
Actually, this resolution and the two following are all in coordination with our facade improvement grant, which is a city-funded grant that has been on hiatus for the last four years as we participate in the downtown challenge grant with that facade program. So we're reinstituting this program. This last budget season, we plugged in $25,000 into the budget as a maximum amount or amount to a potentially award for this season, and we've had three applicants. And the design committee from Community Revitalization reviewed the applicants and made the following recommendations for award. We have the Charles Theater, which has a total project cost of $79,144. They're applying for the maximum amount of $10,000 for repair, reseal, and protective glazing of the Art Deco Terracotta Facade. And then at the Stacy and Stacy Akerson property at 1006 North Grand, they have a project that includes tuck pointing, window installation, new exterior doors, with a total project cost of $20,950, and they are also asking for the $10,000 cap. Both of those, and these, asked and received the recommendation from the committee for the $10,000 max. The remaining $5,000 that was left was recommended to Sam and Julie Offerman on their commercial building project at 707 South Gilbert. They have a total project cost of $13,394 to address issues associated with ADA accessibility and curb repair. And the total max that they could apply for would be just over $6,000. We had $5,000 left, so that's what the committee reviewed and awarded. So out of the total $25,000, we have $25,000 recommended to be awarded to those three different entities.
We're at this point handling 117-15. There'll be two more resolutions coming on the remaining items, but this one has to do with a Charles Theater.
This is for the Charles Theater for $10,000.
Discussion.
And what was the work again done, being done for the theater?
This would be, it's for resealing and protective glazing of the Art Deco Terracotta Facade on the building.
And that's different than what's been going on down there for the last week or 10 days?
It has. I think Mark could probably speak to this a little bit.
It is. What's going on currently is work on the gold leaf itself. They broke this project out into two separate ones because they can't have begun the work that they're asking for until it's approved. So that particular one, I've been watching that one closely since it's next door. If you drive by during the daytime, the gold leaf, I'm telling you, really shines right now. But that's what they've been working on. That facade actually requires quite a bit of work, so they broke it up into two different projects.
Okay.
How many people does that theater sit?
I want to say 250, but I'm not sure.
Okay. I so move for 117-15. Second.
Any other questions or discussion? Clerk to call the roll.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Star.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye. 117-15 is approved. Consideration of Resolution 118-15, approving facade funding for Stacy and Stacy Akerson, 1006 North Grand Avenue. Discussion.
This is the former Charlie Western Railroad building, right next to the Three Spurs there on North Grand. Building has been unoccupied for several decades, so they're proposing to rehab it and return it to use. The first floor is commercial, the second floor is residential rentals.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay. I happen to drive, I've lived in here for, trust me, for quite a while, happened to drive past it. I didn't think it was in that rough a shape. Drove past it. That building is pretty rough, but I'm excited that they're going to be doing this project.
It needs work, but it's got a lot of character inside. It's a really neat building, and we're excited to see what can be done. And there are plans where the exterior would bring it back pretty much the way it originally looked.
And so this money really isn't going to touch a whole lot. It's just part of the overall, they're doing a big project. This goes towards, you know, part of the facade area.
This is basically preservation of the exterior.
What did the railroad use that building for, Mark?
I don't know. I know they had tie storage and rail storage in the back. There's a number of concrete piers behind the building that are very large and would be difficult to remove, and this project is actually, a different phase of it is going to be reusing those as is to make storage units. So we'll be maintaining that. I'm sure it was offices. It's got a giant two-story safe in the middle of the building, so, which is neat with this project. They'll be saving that, and it's built into the way they're going to reuse it. They're going to weld in place the open safe door. It still says Charlie Western Road above it, and utilize those as walk-in closets.
Oh, wow.
That's a very strong building. My mother-in-law worked in that building for years, and it's good to bring it back to life. My question is, this funding comes out of the Riverside TIF district?
Correct.
And this is right on the edge of it, or is it in the district?
It is right on the edge.
All right. Well, we're stretching a little to bring it in. Okay. And that's fine.
It's on North Grand and Riverside TIF, involves North Grand.
Yeah, that is right at the border.
It is in the newly expanded Main Street Downtown District.
Okay.
We had state staff here and walked them, and we've got to make a good, solid argument to get them to approve what our downtown district is, and they did approve that as being downtown.
We can legally move that into here and be covered on that?
Well, we're moving it, and it's right on the border there, so it's.
As long as it's inside that area, it's inside the area.
The border, you know, it's delineated on a map, so whatever falls within that border on the map is included in that area. And that's the way the downtown area and the Riverside TIF have been delineated, so.
That being said, I'll move for it.
Second.
Further questions or discussion? Clerk to call the roll.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Star.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Resolution 118-15 is approved. Consideration of Resolution 119-15, approving facade funding for Sam and Julie Offerman at 707 Gilbert Street. Discussion.
This building, if you're not familiar with it, is the one that houses Mercy Dialysis Center next door to Quick Star.
Kind of same question I've asked before. What's the specific project, as specific as you can get for this property?
The specific project for this is to replace deteriorated sidewalk adjacent to the sides of the building and widen them and put in curb and gutter, not gutter, but curb, for ADA compliance because of the clientele that the renter requires.
As I, I talked about this at length, sometimes a little too much at our planning session. I think it's a great business that's in there. However, I don't think, you know, decisions are based on who is in there or who isn't. This is, to me, a structural, and it's a facade grant. And I do not believe that this project is in the spirit of this grant at all. So it's one of those marginal, but there is a handicap accessibility in the back of the building. This is where the transit buses pull up, is to that entry point. There's, if that business, that renter is unsatisfied, that's a landlord-tenant issue. They could, I could give you five locations right now, they can move into in a heartbeat and still be in town. This project, whether it happens or not, would not hurt that business, and it shouldn't be a factor, whether or not it hurts the business or not. I agree, they need to have a handicap accessible location, but this grant is not for this project.
Further discussion?
Do the guidelines for the applications exclude this type of project?
Does not disqualify it.
Okay. And the committee?
It comes down to what your definition of the exterior is, and talks about the facade or exterior of the building. So in this case, the design committee looked at the fact that the entryways to the building are dependent on that accessibility, on those adjacent sidewalks. It's not the sidewalk running in front of it, the public sidewalk. It is the adjacent two sides to the building that lead to the entryways.
And to me, the steps are an exterior of the lot, not an exterior of the building. As was hinted to, it comes down to interpretation. I see walls, windows, doors, those are facade. That's a facade project.
That's exactly what it is, is interpretation.
Yep.
In this particular grant, like I said, it does not disqualify it, but it's a gray area, and it comes down to what your definition of exterior is.
And people are encouraged to, you know, apply for a grant. I mean, you know, whether they're a definite or not, you know, apply for it, worst that can be done is, you know, they'll be told no. And so sometimes there's going to be projects that don't fit within the scope. And again, I'm not saying anything negative about the dialysis that's in there. I think it's a great project. I just don't think this specific grant fits with that project.
Further discussion?
Well, I was not at the planning session Wednesday night when you discussed it, but I did follow up on it and talk to a couple of staff members. I kind of agree if a facade is a facade is a building, and I don't like extending that to sidewalks, curb and gutter, then we'll be talking about parking lots and God knows what we open the door to. So I think the building improvements has to be building improvements. It has no direct bearings on who owns it or what's in it. It is an improvement of the building for the betterment of the community. That's what I kind of look at it as. So that's where I'm coming from, I guess.
Further discussion?
Steve and I have discussed, too, the need to revisit the criteria for this particular grant and tighten it up.
Yeah, it's a little vague, sometimes to our benefit, sometimes maybe not. But, you know, we have a paragraph description for the program, and that's all that's laid out, so it's.
I take it this is a, this is a program through revitalization, is that correct?
It's actually city-funded and revitalization administers for the city.
Right. But as opposed to or compared to old programs that we had in our ordinances like R.I.P. and H.I.P. programs, this is actually, this program is defined by you guys and we fund it, right?
It's my understanding it was in place before I took over. It has not been used for the past four years because of the facade master plan.
Okay.
This is in the Riverside TIF district, right?
This is. Again, in the expanded district approved by Main Street.
Further discussion?
The main reason for that, Jerry, is to include both the museum and Sherman House, Bed and Breakfast, and the courthouse. So it was extended across the river, right there, and this falls just within it.
Is the Sherman House in the TIF district?
Yes.
Okay.
I guess it should be noted that, you know, we utilize Riverside TIF funds to fund this project, so whatever we, we put $25,000 in as a kind of a marker, but whatever we award will be what we certify this coming season to be reimbursed in the following year through TIF, so.
You did say that you have an advisory committee, and they spent a lot of time discussing this, and it was, I don't know exactly what word you used, but basically questionable. And in the end, they voted to fund this.
Correct. They reviewed it, and again, it came down to their definition, and in this point, the committee's definition, they decided of the exterior would include the outside entryway into the building.
And I misspoke. They voted to recommend to us that we fund it.
Yes, they cannot approve it. All it can do is recommend it to the city because it's city-funded.
I misspoke, I'm sorry.
Further questions or discussion? Are there any motions to approve the funding or not?
Since we have a committee recommendation, and they've reviewed it, I'll so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Clerk to call the roll.
Malero.
I'll vote A only because I think if you don't support your committee, you won't have a committee very long to make these recommendations, so.
So your vote is A?
A, yeah.
Star.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
No.
The ayes have it. And 119-15 is approved.
Thank you. I do want to reiterate, too, the committee did make one last recommendation regarding this fund, that asking the city to consider increasing the support for this fund because of the number of projects that are coming forward, looking for assistance, incentives or push. This project is now tapped as far as this fiscal year with the approval of these funds, and we have at least five more projects that have approached us about it, which is a great problem for us to have. But at this point, that local facade improvement fund is now tapped out until July 1st next year, should you rep it.
Can we toss that out as an agenda item and maybe
Thank you, Mike.
Talk about that in the future here?
Budget season's right around the corner.
Yeah, it usually is.
The other thing I'd like to do is I'd like to understand how this has evolved and what the source of it is, whether this comes out of our prior ordinance or if this is a separate deal or not. Because the ordinance itself had been a facade program and it had fairly strict definitions, but this seems to be something independent, so it still serves a good purpose, but
Yeah, absolutely.
We need to tighten it up.
Next up is consideration of the third and final reading of Ordinance 1086, amending the zoning ordinance, the city of Charles City, Iowa, to change the classification of a parcel of real property from R-2 General Residence District to B-2 General Business District. Discussion.
Well, yes, this is the third and final reading of this ordinance, but just for everyone's review, the Charles City Home for the Agent owns the property at 302 North Grand Avenue. It's commonly referred to as the Star Home. And the Charles City Home for the Agent, they have a proposal from Mr. Dennis Donovan to purchase the building, remodel it for professional office use space, so that's why they've petitioned to rezone this property from the R-2 zoning to B-2 General Business District. The Planning and Zoning Commission, they have reviewed it. They have recommended to the council to approve this rezoning request, and the council has approved the previous two readings and have had a public hearing on this ordinance. So we'd recommend approval of the third reading and also authorize a city clerk to publish the approved ordinance.
Have there been any, have there been any comments since our previous readings?
No.
So I move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Clerk to call the roll.
Star.
Aye.
Jaeger.
I'll remember to abstain.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Yep.
And ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Charles City, Iowa, to change the classification of a parcel of real property from R-2 General Residence District to B-2 General Business District.
General Business District.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt and publish Ordinance 1086?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk of Colorado.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Okay, the motion's approved, the ordinance will be, is adopted and will be published. Consideration Resolution 120-15, accepting 2015 Cedar River Retaining Wall Project Discussion.
Well, the 2015 Cedar River Retaining Wall Repair Project, that's one of this year's projects that have been completed. Building and Grounds LLC, they were our general contractor, and they have completed the work in general, substantial compliance with the construction documents. This project included removing and stabilizing the large limestone boulders on two separate areas on both sides of the river. These were areas damaged in two previous flood events. First area are the, is the retaining wall, just adjacent to the courthouse parking lot, right by the Main Street Dam. And the second area is on this side of the river, the retaining wall directly behind the library and the Baptist Church. This project will also receive some FEMA disaster funding. Now, the project improvements, they were completed at a total cost of $45,220. Our original estimate was $44,300, and Building and Grounds, they submitted a bid of $37,119. So we did have a cost overrun of about $8,100. And nearly all this cost overrun, or almost $7,000 of that resulted in one item, and that was actually when we got into the construction, we started stabilizing some of the retaining wall on this side of the river. We decided we, in order to do the job right, we just needed to enlarge that area and do more of the stabilization, so that's why we have more of that cost. We, the city has been provided a maintenance bond, it's a two-year maintenance bond, so we recommend resolution, approval of Resolution 120-15, as well as authorizing the final payment for this project.
Discussion and questions?
Since you agree with the extra work, John, you'll personally guarantee, besides their bonded guarantee, that it'll all stay there now, work?
Well, actually, in June, you know, we had that flood event, and this area on this side of the river was actually completely inundated, and it performed very well.
Okay. Just checking, just wanted to make sure.
The answer's no.
John, I should've said something to you earlier, and I, I forgot it, didn't get to it, but the part here of the Building and Grounds has provided us with a maintenance bond that can be used if necessary, that's for the work to be done, not for the work that has been done?
No, that's for the work that has been done. It's a maintenance bond that will run from.
So do we have some coverage for what needs to be done to correct?
Right.
Okay.
That's the maintenance bond, or?
Yeah, for, for, for this work that they're doing right now, for the repairs, repair work.
So they're going to cover some of that?
For the period of how many years, two to two years?
No, for the, for the work that they're actually, for the work that they actually did this summer for us, if it's determined there's something wrong with it, or if something isn't holding, then they, their maintenance bond will.
Cover it.
Cover that, yes.
Your point, Steve, is from this point on.
Right.
So if we're going to have any floods, let's have minor ones, and in this next two-year period, nothing beyond that.
Well.
On that happy note.
Let's not have any.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Thank you, Keith.
Clerk of Colorado.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Okay, Resolution 120-15 is approved. Consideration Resolution 121-15 approving additional reimbursement to the Charles City School District for the First Avenue Extension Project. Discussion.
As we all know, as part of the new middle school project, First Avenue is being extended and improved between L Street and Park Avenue. And the school district, they have, have under contract McKenna's Excavating to do part of this work. McKenna's is doing the underground work, the grading and storm sewer and subdrain work for the street project, as well as their site work. Recently, McKenna's Excavating, due to some unforeseen conditions, they've resulted in some additional work that's, has some additional cost associated with it, and I have a summary there for you. Some water main needs to be relocated due to storm sewer intake, that's about $9,300. We have a couple of modifications to some intakes for $800, some additional support around that sanitary sewer as part of these intakes, that's a little over, well, $370. As well as between Central Avenue and Park Avenue, there's some area of unstable subgrade that has to be stabilized with some larger rock, and that's a little over 2,000, so there's additional cost of almost $12,600. And now, we've been working with the, with the engineer, and these are legitimate costs, and the school district, the contract between the school district and McKenna's that does have a mechanism in there for change orders, because this project is a lump sum bid, but they do have the ability to do change orders. The reason it's before you is the, back in March, the council and the school district, they approved an agreement, the cost share for this, and the, this agreement stipulated that the city would reimburse the school district 100% of the bid amount, and it really doesn't address any type of these additional costs. So we'd recommend this resolution approving the additional reimbursement to the school district for these additional work items.
I think I would add to that, that the intention was to pay for the cost of the street, and I think that actually, when it says we're going to reimburse them for the bid amount, it contemplates the bid as may be adjusted by the contract, so I, I think it's consistent with what we agreed to do. If they'd not had a provision for adjustment in the cost, then I might've had some problem, but it's typical contract, if they run into unforeseen circumstances, they can adjust that, so I think we're really only doing what we had agreed to do.
All, all this work is directly related to the street portion itself.
Right.
None of the rest of the school works.
Now, these items here, I mean, they're, they're all fairly normal. Is there anything that we could have done to maybe have located these previously, or is it, just, they're, they're on, I mean, they're, they're not, you know, surveying our GIS system, nothing, or?
Excuse me, no, especially like the, the, when they actually, we had the water main located, but when it was actually excavated, the actual location of it was not where the locate was.
Yeah, well, once that, once the surface is removed, things tend to jump all of a sudden on us, so, this is pretty normal, I just didn't know if there's anything that we could have in place or future-wise to maybe avoid some of these things, but which we would have replaced potentially anyway, so.
Anytime you're digging a hole. You never know what you might have found.
Surprise, every time.
The extension of First Avenue, what's, that's three blocks?
Yes, yeah, because it's from L to.
I think that's costing us an excess of $200,000 to put in the street, and we're doing that, and without the middle school expansion and so on, we probably wouldn't do that, but it's a good asset to the city to have it, because it gives those people a second access or excess out of that area. So I think that's good, but, but we're putting another $12,000 into it, we're doing an awful lot to help the school, and I have no problem with that, but I just want to recognize that we're working with them pretty heavy on it.
Further discussion?
We have a funding source for this extra money, then, the street-related, or?
Take it out of the councilman's salaries.
It's still within our budget amount.
Oh, that's right.
And it'll come out of the sewer funds and water funds, it's revenue, part of its revenue funds and part of its local option, sales tax, right?
It comes out of funds we can't use or anything else, but I think it's worthwhile.
Further questions or discussion?
I'd so move.
Second.
Clerk of Colorado.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Resolution 121-15 is approved. Miscellaneous correspondence?
None.
City attorneys report?
The only thing I'd say is that we are, the staff meets with me every Wednesday afternoon, and we are continuing to work away on our nuisance conditions, we are establishing a priority list of problem properties in town, which in fact.
I handed that out to them.
Okay, and so we're going to, we've already made some progress on some of these properties, and we're going to keep working on those, so I think you'll see some continuing progress in town. I think that we're working hard on the rental inspection provision, so I really think it's beginning to pay dividends, and the fact that we, I'm, I'm receiving fewer complaints from the citizens, so I think they're recognizing that we're making some progress, and they're getting bang for their buck on these areas, so.
What is the priority list? Is the first page the number one priority?
It's actually somewhat of a prioritized list as far as how you, the sequence you see them there. The first two specifically, we've been, we've been working on quite a deal the last year or so, and, so, as you go down, as you go down through there, it's, it's for one reason or another why we ranked some ahead of the other, but that's essentially in the list of how you're seeing them in order there.
You have a nice brochure.
It is.
It's uptown.
It's so beautiful in color.
Yeah.
Actually, Steve, I'm really pleased that you've provided this to us, it's much easier for me to visualize stuff than to hear you talk it through, because the, the pictures are really apparent.
Yeah.
So thank you for doing that.
You bet, we thought that was important, we went, Paul and Jason and I went out on a tour, well, September 1st, right on there, and took a look at some of the, some of the locations that have been brought to their attention, some that they'd seen, some that I, I had seen, and we took a look at those, took pictures and took notes, and thought this would be a good way to present them, so you guys could.
And the cover page is properties that have been addressed to a certain extent?
Yeah, I had fun with the cover page, those are, for, those are four of the ones that we've addressed in one way, shape, or form. As you work your way from left to right, the one on the left was completely removed by the property owner. The second one was 507 Wright, which is the one, the one that the city paid to demo and take out. The one beside that is, it's got siding on at least half of it now.
It's moving.
And the last one there is the, the property, and it was completely covered by trees and brush, you couldn't even see it, so.
It would nearly qualify as a forest reserve.
The third one's on Fourth Avenue?
Yes.
Yes, yeah. I'm stealing your, we've segwayed, segwayed right into mine, I guess.
No, go ahead.
Are you going to comment on, you're, you're giving a presentation in Cedar Rapids, correct?
Yes, uh, between the City of Manchester and, and Charles City, we're, we're giving a presentation, a presentation on nuisance abatement practices, policies, and, and so we'll be doing that bright and early on Friday morning at 8:00, so.
So this wasn't really for us, this was, this was for the, the presentation?
This is completely separate, actually, I have a completely different PowerPoint.
PowerPoint, okay.
I'll give you, I'll give you a copy of that, too, so.
That's even more spectacular.
It's got a good closer in it, in there, yeah. Since we're both Whitewater communities, if all of this fails, just put it in Whitewater Park, so that's how we wrap it up. The other sheet I want to draw your attention to, this, this is kind of a follow-up from what, what we put together last year, it actually has a total page on the front, then the next two pages are everything from July 1st of 2014 till today, so a little over a year, just on the various properties, mowing and refuse and all that type of good stuff, what we've done the last year or so, so just to keep that, keep that in front of you, so you, so you're aware, and if there are places on there, or places in your mind that aren't on that list, please let us know, so we can address them.
On a mowing one, so somebody lets their grass grow too long and we mow it for them?
Yes.
Then do we bill the property owner for that?
Yeah, we, I think we, we usually bill, bill the property owner first, and if they don't pay, then we assess a lien to the property.
And they're given notice first, though, before it gets to that point where we're actually mowing it?
I think we post it, don't we?
Well, you know, we, you call them, you try and hunt them down, and that doesn't work.
We make an effort.
Yeah, yeah, it's not just something on a whim, like, "Alice, let's go mow," no, they're, they're given plenty of opportunities.
They're given plenty of opportunity to mow it, we don't like mowing grass.
No. I guess it's great.
I think we made good progress on that, that's good, and let's keep it up.
Add substance to what we've been talking about.
There you go.
But it's obvious we got a long way to go, and as we tackle one or two, then seems like another couple, they're kind of like mushrooms, they keep popping up.
Try to make a top-10 list. We'll end up with like 16, so.
I, I appreciate the work, but.
It'll take a while.
We gotta keep after it.
A top-10 list you don't want to make.
Ridged.
You just start, yeah, you just start at one end and come back and start over, so.
Yeah. The only other things I have to mention were, were Cambrex, we have a coordination agreement with Cambrex that we are updating tonight, nothing that needs council approval, there's nothing new, we're just basically changing the name from Salisbury to Cambrex, so just so the council's aware, mayor's signing off on that, as are Hugh and Ralph, and, let's see, well, then Iowa League Conference this Wednesday through Friday, and then Mayor Trudy and Councilman Hammond and I will be attending that, and then from Saturday to Wednesday, I'll be at the IC May Conference in Seattle, so I'll be out of the office for about a week or so. Other than that, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you.
Back to the city clerks' report.
Save the best for last, didn't you? We will not be having a planning session September 28th, Steve is going to be gone, and I was going to be gone, too, but I would come back if we needed to, but there's only one item that we had to discuss, and it's very, very minor, we don't even know if it's going to need to go to a planning session, so we thought we'd give you guys a break. So there will not be a planning session on September 28th, and I want to thank Keith and Dan and Mike for submitting papers to run for city council, they're the only ones that submitted, so everybody's going to be unopposed, so I want to thank them for putting their names out there.
Think there should still be a debate.
No, that would be interesting, wouldn't it?
It happens up in Wrightsville, right?
Let's don't even go there, okay, but that's all I have, so.
Board commissioner committee report?
Since neither Ralph nor Steve mentioned it in their reports, the dog ordinance committee did meet, which is Michael, myself, Hugh, plus these two esteemed gentlemen over here. We're, we're going to be working on that, and hopefully there will be something coming through to a workshop shortly, so we get that, get that going, get that completed.
Yeah, we would've talked about it on the 28th, but Steve's going to be gone, he really wanted to be here for that discussion, he did not want to miss it.
Well, we've kind of sat on it long enough, we need to get it completed.
We'll get a, I've already done some drafting on it, so we'll get that to you pretty soon.
Well, but we, we took our time doing it right, and I think we've come to a pretty good, pretty good solution.
I hope so.
Time will tell.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So I'll move, Your Honor.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, where?